Good evening. A call to order the Committee of the Hole for Wednesday, March 22, 2023 at 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag.
All right, the next order of business is roll call. Chad, you're calling?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. Alder Allen?
Present.
Alder Aratafrata? Alder Gerhart is likely absent with excuse. Alder Herbst? Alder Maldonado is also absent with excuse. Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Strassman?
Here.
Alder Udell?
Here.
Alder Wheeler?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you, Chad. Moving on, excuse me, moving on to item four, approval of minutes for the January 25, 2023 draft minutes. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay. A motion from Alder Wheeler, seconded by Alder Allen. Discussion, corrections? Hearing none, place the motion before us to a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 One correction, I think that was Alder Herbst.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, is that what? We haven't... Pardon?
I think Jim and I were the same time.
Oh, okay, that's why I missed it. All right. I can just simply ask for the correction, correct? Chad?
I gave it to Herbst initially, so you said Wheeler, and now I'm giving it back to Herbst.
Okay, go ahead, Dave.
I'll accept that. Accept that amendment.
Oh, I thought there was an actual correction.
Oh, that was the correction. Who seconded the motion to approve the minutes?
All right, very good. We have you. All right. All right, so, just so I'm correct...
Just to clarify, Alder Udell?
All this back and forth. I'm sorry, what, Aaron?
This is Chad. Just to clarify, I have Alder Herbst with the motion and Alder Allen with the second.
Yes.
Very good, that is correct.
Thank you.
Well, now that we got that out of the way...
Got that one out of the way. Wait till we have... What do we have next? All right. All right, I will place the motion before us to another vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone against the motion? Hearing none, the ayes have it, motion carries. Moving on to item five, public appearances for non-agenda items. I don't believe we have anybody registered. I see Chad shaking his head, no. Moving on to item six, the agenda items. This evening, we have Tree Advisory Ordinance before us, or discussion. Anna Healy, urban forester, and Linda Brewer, Tree Advisory Committee, and then we have Craig?
Rap.
Rap. Let's make sure I have your correct pronunciation of your last name. That will be presenting. However, I believe I'm turning this over to Scott Endel first. Is that correct, Scott?
Please, please, if I may.
You may. You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Certainly, I'd like to thank again the Tree Advisory Committee, Craig and Linda, and certainly Anna, for their continued work and commitment to the Tree Protection Ordinance and just generally to our urban forest and the natural resources that we have. You know, as you all know, we are a Tree City USA, and we've been a Tree City USA for 26 years, which is really a true testimony to the commitment that the city has. And some of you may have known Jim Kristoff, who was the former director, and Ed Bartel, and now Anna, in leading the, you know, the Urban Forestry Program. One thing that I did, maybe as a preface, learned recently that one of the goals of the Tree Advisory Committee is to become a Tree Cities of the World. And that is another credential above a Tree City USA, and as I understand, there's only one other Tree Cities of the World in the state of Wisconsin, and this is one of their charges. And there's two, there's two items that the Tree Advisory Committee is trying to check off, if you would, in order to meet the standards for that. And one of them is this Tree Protection Ordinance. So that is really kind of the driver behind their work. The second one is an inventory of the urban forests, the trees. And, you know, I certainly wanted to thank the mayor and the council for including the tree inventory update and the ARPA-TID plan, so that's also in the works, if you would. So that's just kind of a precursor to the presentation and maybe a little bit of understanding of the goal behind the Tree Protection Ordinance. So, thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks for that intro, Scott.
You're welcome.
All right. So, I'm gonna, I think Scott did an excellent job of giving the broad strokes of why we're here. I'm gonna walk through a little bit of the why we're doing this, how we're doing this, and give you just a broad picture, and then we'll open it up to questions afterwards. Starting off, the why, I think he brought up excellently, that we do want to be one of those Tree Cities of the World. That's something that we think would be a nice designation for Pittsburgh to achieve, since there is only that one other city in Wisconsin that has it. I think it would help us stand out against other similar communities. And then also, our comprehensive plan, this 2009, 2019, and 2020 rendition, and then the prior one, includes a goal of developing a Tree Protection Ordinance. So when we were going through that process for this comprehensive plan for Pittsburgh, the Tree Preservation Ordinance jumped out to us as the Tree Advisory Committee as part of, part of our mission, really, is to make sure that we're pursuing those types of goals. Additionally, this is a little bit more on the maybe obvious side, but good canopy covered trees increase property value, they increase happiness amongst residents, they have all sorts of environmental benefits. So we believe that increasing our canopy coverage in the urban service area will only be a net benefit to Pittsburgh overall. And then, as you can kind of see from this rural residential development criteria, we do already have some tree protection things in our plans. These ones do only apply in the rural, rural residential development. So what we're trying to do here is come up with something that could be applied in the urban setting in addition to the stuff that's already in place for the rural setting. On to the what here. Fairly simple. We do have a redlined version available for anybody who wants to see it, but we're trying to add a requirement into the preliminary plat section of our ordinances that would require a tree preservation, a survey of existing trees, and then a plan for how to preserve those trees. That plan is not specific, so developers would be flexible to determine what makes sense, what works for their specific development, work with the Planning Commission to make that, that plan work with the city. And then, the proposed additions to the Section 54 is just providing definitions of terms that would be in that preliminary plat area. That's more of a formality thing, where if we reference something that is previously undefined, we need to say exactly what it is so that anybody reading it would have a lot of clarity there. Here, we've got the actual language redlined. As you'll see in the plat section, we're adding these two areas. The location, size, and type of desirable tree, that's that survey I discussed, and then the Tree Preservation Plan. That would be sent on to the Plan Commission for their review, and then the city forester would have the opportunity to just provide feedback, to say, hey, I think this plan could be much better, or I think this plan is really great, and here's why. You know, it's some flexibility there, where the Plan Commission would just have more information to go on. And then, we won't spend too much time here. The definitions, if you get into actually reading the redline, these are much more important. But the survey, we recommend be done by a certified arborist. This is just an internationally recognized credential that would allow somebody to be considered capable of doing the survey. And then, a few other things, the diameter of breast height. This is the types of trees that we'd be looking at, would be 6-inch diameter of breast height. This is a industry standard measure, but one that is a rough approximation of the viability of a tree. So if it makes it to that 6-inch DBH, then it's much more likely to make it to be a fully mature adult tree in the future. And then, the rest here is just the desirable trees. These are the specific species of trees that we would like included in the survey. The list here is pretty, pretty trim, because there aren't as many trees. There's a lot of invasive species, there's a lot of things that we actually don't need on the survey. And so this list is, is pretty much the ones that we think would be strong, healthy, beneficial for our community going forward. Moving on, I covered this a little bit, but the how, how this is gonna work. This would just trigger with the preliminary plating process, and making sure that desirable trees would be included in the site plans. And then the preservation plan would include just if, if a developer plans to keep certain trees, that would be included in the preservation plan. The process we followed so far, this is actually a pretty abridged version of the route that this ordinance has taken so far. We first met to talk about this even before the date's on here, to start drafting and working it out. Then we met with the city's attorney. Lots of back and forth. We received great feedback from city staff, as well as different committees in the local government. And what we actually have today is pretty much unrecognizable from what we first started with. So I think it's a testament to the process of democracy working pretty well, actually, where we've been able to receive a lot of that feedback. And then, the when, this is discussed already a little bit as well. This is only for preliminary plats. So one of the questions that comes up most frequently is, what about individual property owners? The short answer is that it doesn't apply to them. If, if I want to cut down a tree on my property, this ordinance changes nothing about that process, which we think is important, because that is one of, one of the things that people are most concerned about, is any restrictions that would really affect their ability to decide what their, their personal landscape looks like. And that's an area that we think is beyond the scope of what the Tree Advisory Committee should be looking into. And then, the means here is just the review by City of Pittsburgh Plan Commission. The idea here is that with a survey and a plan, the Plan Commission just has a little bit more information on which to base their plating approval decisions. So increasing the information that they have at their fingertips, we think is only a good thing. And while it might not actually save every tree we would like saved, we're hoping that there will be some amount of back and forth with that Plan Commission, and potentially keeping some things that would have been easy wins, that maybe the developers or other people involved in the city just hadn't considered before. We do, largely to get them into the record here, we have a list of a lot of the most common questions we've gotten. I'm not gonna go through all of them in detail right now. I think I've covered just about all of them in this presentation as well, but if anybody wants to go back and reference, these ones are all available. And I'm always happy to take new questions that are not part of this list. Anna, did you have anything you wanted to add here at the end?
I just wanted to, in terms of the ordinances across the state, I just wanted to say that, I just wanted, thank you, Craig, great job, really appreciate it. We have been researching ordinances, tree preservation ordinances, really around the country, but the ones that are probably the most applicable to what we're doing here in Pittsburgh are the city of Mequon. Mequon has probably the most comprehensive tree preservation ordinance that I've seen. I don't know that we will ever be able to quite get that, to that level of detail, but it is an interesting, interesting ordinance in that it regulates all trees of 6 inches or greater that are considered desirable species in the entire municipality, public, private, or otherwise. So, you know, that's a pretty high bar. But I did want to point out the town of Dunn, you know, our neighbor here to the east, does have a Tree Protection Ordinance, and they're really focused on heritage trees. And, you know, I don't really want to just read to you, but it basically, it says if in any construction of new buildings or structures, you know, they don't want any of the heritage trees harmed in any way. And I did include City of Analaska, as that city is similar in size and kind of structure to the city of Pittsburgh, and they also have a Tree Preservation Ordinance. And I think they are really focused on, you know, similar to our ordinance, they're really focused on new development and trying to keep canopy in areas where they're, they're doing a lot of building, which kind of does apply here as well. And we did just want to kind of take you through a little bit of a thought experiment. We did want to just show an example of a tree that we think probably would have been able to be saved if it had gotten a little bit more attention earlier in the process. This tree would not, this is not, this tree did not, this area did not go through the preliminary plating process, so it's an example of, you know, it's more of a thought experiment than an example of what this ordinance would do. And, you know, this is, as you know, this is the, this is adjacent to McKee Farms Park, this is the Willshire, I forget the name of this development, it's the same name as a hotel, and I always get confused, but at any rate. So this is off of Willshire, between Willshire and McKee Farms Park. And as you can see, there are a lot of trees on the lot. The one that really kind of brought, you know, came to my attention was the oak tree that's in the southwest corner, it's right on the lot line. And this is that tree, it's a beautiful white oak tree, and you can see, it's right on that lot line, and it's outside the grading limits for the building. And the other side is city property. So this is a tree that if, if you're gonna preserve a tree, it seems like this one's in a good location, it's not interfering with the building, and it's not interfering with any of the construction activities, because it's right on the edge of the property. And this was a picture of that tree in July, last July. But unfortunately, because it wasn't really, it wasn't on the plans, and it wasn't really thought, preservation of this tree wasn't really thought through during the, the process of, you know, putting this development together, this is what that tree ended up looking like by September. And so we're just kind of hoping that with this process, we can take these trees that are on the edge or, you know, outside the way of the, you know, the buildings and most of the infrastructure, and give them, at least give them a shot. And, you know, and this tree, if you look at it, I mean, it increased value, it would have increased value to the development that was happening there, and also to our park. So it would have been a win-win to keep it. Anyway, so...
With that, we'll open it up for anybody who has any questions.
Before we do that, I'd like to open it up to the public, but even before that, I'd like to, is there anything, Scott, that you would like to speak to, you know, from a staff perspective, before I open it up to the public?
No, I, I think that's, that's good. I know we, we are looking to, to meet, as a staff, in, in next month, to begin to, or to continue the work, if everyone is, is good with it.
Very good. Then before we proceed to counsel, we do have one registered voter, registered voter, registered citizen, excuse me, that would like to speak. Ned? And the gentleman is Edward Hoyt, at 5926 Schuman Drive, and he would like to speak in opposition, but you have three minutes, Ned. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'd like to commend the group for all of their time and effort, and the council and the staff for all the consideration in this. I do find myself speaking in opposition to it, simply because I think it still needs some, some work and refinement to achieve the, the goals and objectives. I think it's laudable and important to consider the natural resources that we have when considering a plat in a sort of subdivision. I'm just not sure that this will achieve the, the goals kind of as set. I wanted to just kind of three, three aspects of that. One is, I think you're putting a reasonably high burden on somebody who's doing the plating process, because the requirements, as I read the draft, basically require a full survey of a level of tree that makes it very, very expensive for anybody to actually conduct that work. I suspect you could probably get to the same level with, there are comments in there in terms of tree protection plans that allow sort of categorization of areas, but the requirement as written would require a, a full survey of trees, and that's a very expensive kind of exercise when you're requiring a certified arborist. Second, I think there's some statistical kind of calculation things in there. I think you've got circumference in, when you actually mean breast height diameter, so actually getting the standard right, I think, is important. And a 6-inch circumference is a very, very small sort of tree, so I think setting a standard appropriately in terms of what's a significant tree is very important. And then finally, if you create, in my opinion and my experience, if you create a bar which is too high to actually engage in the conversation, you'll actually encourage people to do the tree clearing prior to submitting for a plat. And so I think you want to set a sufficiently high bar that engages in the conversation, without actually requiring people such a level of investment and expense, that it becomes easier to avoid the experience by simply clearing in advance of the plating process. So I encourage the efforts. I would just encourage you to spend a bit more time on the, the details and the specifications that are here, because I think you've still got some, some gaps in the policy that will lead to some unintended consequences.
Very good. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, I will close the public comment portion. We have no further, no additional registered residents that would like to speak. I'll open it up now for discussion from, from council. And Alder Allen, you had your hand raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. The first one is, so you, you said the town of Dunn has their ordinance?
Yes.
And Mequon has an ordinance that you say is something that we can't achieve. What, what was, what exactly are the requirements of that ordinance that make it more difficult to achieve? I mean, theoretically, the council can just pass any ordinance it wants. So we could just take the language from Mequon's ordinance, revise it to, to, to match up with our other ordinances, and just pass it. But what is, what is, what is the issue with making this happen?
Do you want to address that? Because we would have loved that, but do you want to address that, Craig?
Yeah, I think the, the easy answer, the, the simple answer is just that we would be making a larger leap to that one, and the political resistance that we got just even in the earlier stages made it seem like that was a little bit farther out of reach from where we're at. There were also some comments from our city's attorney, that while that ordinance may be in place, she does not feel as strongly that that ordinance would hold up necessarily to challenges in court. None of us are legal experts along those lines, but it, it was with her recommendation that we not try to go quite that far at this stage, we would have loved to. So...
Which, which was the, you said there was another community in Wisconsin that had achieved the Tree City of the World. Which community is that?
I think it's, I could look this up, I should have looked it up. It's in, it's in the Fox Cities, oh, man. Oh, correct.
Sheboygan.
Yeah, it's Sheboygan.
Right, and so do we, did we, did we look at their Tree Preservation Ordinance to see...
So, yeah, that's a good question. So I talked to their forester, and basically, it's, because I think this is not, I mean, one thing I'll say is land clearing is not free, and if you can look at, we've had this kind of work done for the city, we just did it for East Lacy Road, and it was less than $2,000 for that whole stretch. So, I mean, to say it's like, super expensive, you know, and you can also do it with a drone. I mean, there's lots of different ways to get this information. But, so, the thing is, for them, they, they already kind of had some of these things in place, and so it was just kind of like formalizing what they already did, and it's kind of, theirs is similar to ours in that it's a planning tool, it's, you know, it's getting the trees part, in part of the process when you're doing planning. So, and we can do a little bit more research into what they're actually, like the specifics of their ordinance.
Well, that would, that would be helpful to know, because if theirs is, is achieving the goal that we're, that we have set forth...
The thing is, they're not, they don't have as much development going on. So like, Analaska has, you know, is approving plaits pretty consistently, kind of like we are, and Sheboygan's not, so that's a difference. I mean, that's a huge difference, because they can just say like, hey, when you want to get your garage redone, you know, you have, you know, we need to look at the trees, which is a whole different scenario. So that's part of the difference, is that's a little bit geared toward a different audience, I guess. But, but you're right, we could, we could, that could, would be a good example to look at as well.
I talked to the forester in Mequon, and he said that too. They, they are in a little bit, their city is in a little bit different position too. They don't have as much new development going on as we do. And we started out with something more comprehensive, more, more requirements, and we were, the feedback we got was that was not a good place to start. So, and what the city attorney told us is this, this is a good place to start, and we can improve on this if we need to in the future. So we see this as a big step in the right direction, because right now, the trees aren't even on the plaits, so they're not even part of the conversation. So I think that's why you're, that's why we're starting where we are.
Well, I mean, I don't, I, I have asked on certain development proposals that have happened in my district, I have asked specifically for a tree inventory of certain...
Yes.
Of certain developments, just because I know there's a lot of trees there, and...
Right.
Yeah, a lot of them are box elders, but some of them are oaks, and some of them are other things.
Some are 200 years old.
Right. So we need to know what those are.
Yes.
And I, I, I mean, I don't, I honestly, you know, I'm 57 years old. I've been involved in Pittsburgh politics for half my life, and I don't believe developers when they come whining about, oh, this is gonna be too expensive, because they build here anyway. There is no end of building in Pittsburgh. So it's not too expensive, it just makes our community a little bit better. So the, the whining that I hear from developers and the pushback, I don't care. They can run someone against me if they want, I don't care. I'll go out there and run on preserving trees. I think that's a good political goal. I think that's something that we can be proud of as, as elected representatives in this city. And, you know, if it's, if, if we're gonna have to deal with, oh, you know, this tree inventory is gonna cost me another $5,000 on my $50 million development, I mean, please, just stop. I mean, this is stupid stuff we hear from these people. So I don't take, I don't take comments like that from developers very seriously anymore. When I first got elected, I did, because I was naive, and I was dumb, and I thought they actually were trying to tell us the truth. But I've grown up, and I've realized that's not true anymore. So the question is, the, the question is, does this ordinance, as you're, as, as we're working on right now, does this get us close to, or, or does it, does it get us to the goal that we're looking for, for this Tree City of the World designation?
I hope so. I mean, that's a good question. I, I don't know how thoroughly they're gonna look at our, our ordinance. I can talk to the people at the Arbor Day Foundation and find out, because they don't, in that, in that, in that criteria, they don't say exactly what they're looking for, they just say you have a Tree Preservation Ordinance. So if there are more criteria than that, I'm not aware of it, but I can, I definitely can look into that.
But to, to also get to your question, the Tree Advisory Committee won't be done after this, so we, we do consider this to be a, a good first step. And to, to the nice gentleman's point, it might result in people clearcutting before they do the plating. We hope not. We think that's largely a culture thing that will have to be worked out. But that's not any different than what they already do. So even if we, if we improve the process for some of what's going on, we do think that would be a step in the right direction.
Well, you can write an ordinance to control that. I mean, you know, that may be something that's more common in an area that's outside municipal boundaries prior to being annexed, but within municipal boundaries, you can't just do those things. You can't just go and clearcut 120 acres in, in, in the city of Pittsburgh, you're just not allowed to do that. Now, I mean, do people do things that are illegal? Sure, they do it all the time. And I don't have a, but, but I don't have a problem writing a stricter ordinance that controls some of that, too. That's obviously not the, the result we're looking for here. We're looking for a result that's going, going to improve the quality of life in the city of Pittsburgh. And part of what improves the quality of life, that I've been hearing from residents ever since I was first elected in 19... since I was first elected in 1993, which was a long freaking time ago, that, that our parks and our natural amenities and some of the open space, these are the things that people in the city of Pittsburgh like. These are the reasons people want to live here. Even if you go into areas in downtown Madison, you go into some of the old neighborhoods, the things that give those neighborhoods some of their character are the old trees that are there that are, that may be some of those century oaks and maybe other big maple trees and other hardwoods that are, that have survived despite, you know, despite having development happen around them when there weren't these kinds of controls. So, so I want to do what we can to help make this a reality. And, and, you know, you can just tell from my conversation tonight that I'm just, I'm tired of the crap that comes from these, from people who are, who are, who are opposing these things. It's just dumb. It's dumb. We're trying to make a better city here and these are the things we have to do. So, so I think we should investigate further. What are the things that, that they're looking for in order to give these designations out? What are the things we have to do as a city to make sure that we can qualify for it? If we need to add something more to our land disturbing ordinance, because we do have an, we do have an ordinance about land disturbing and you can't just go and plow up a, a field because it's fun. I mean, there has to be, there has to be an actual reason for it. There has to be a development proposal. We have anti-erosion ordinances. We have, we have a lot of these things in place that would prevent somebody from just going and clear cutting a field because they want to build there and they don't want to have to deal with a tree inventory. But if we need to do something to beef that up, then let's include that in what you're working on. But I, I think we should continue plowing forward with this and getting to the result that we're looking for because this is, this is the kinds of things that make our city a better place to live.
There's no questions. Alder Herbst, go ahead.
I'm going to take some time here, so bear with me. My, my family, I would say is tied closer to trees, I would, I'm just surmising closer than any of yours. I grew up with a great grandfather that was born in 1893. The homes they lived in, in Northern Wisconsin, trees were cut down to build the log cabins for, that they lived in to survive. The tamaracks were cut down for the beams and the barns that our livestock was kept. And, you know, this great grandfather that I'm talking about, he, he was involved with the, the logging of Northern Wisconsin, the pines and the big, the big hardwoods. And so I, I know quite a bit about the history. What I would tell you is the trees are a renewable resource. My father is now 85. He's told me the trees on our property were, you know, fingerlings when he, when he was a young boy and now they're, they're, they're too big. He can't hardly cut one down for firewood. Trees grow back, but the point I, I, you know, and I, I would say my appreciation of trees is greater than everyone's, but I have a different perspective. When I see like the Mequon, I'm going back, I've read the Magna Carta. You know, you can't tell someone what they can do. The tree is on their property and for the city to say, you can't cut that tree, I don't know how they got that through. That's unenforceable and Valerie was, was very right. I, I still respect private property. I would like to preserve trees. I think it makes sense, but property right, property owners' rights, I, I think we still have private property in the, in this country. And I, the question I have for the board, does this cover area outside the urban service territory? Or haven't you thought of that yet?
No, this is for, within the urban service area?
Okay.
Because we already have the rural residential criteria.
Okay. Because that's the point I wanted to bring up, the rural subdivision. You know, what they're gearing towards is taking, say, a hilltop that's wooded, that's not a farmland production, and that's where, you know, one of these would go. And I, I was very worried that then someone, you know, the usual suspects would use that to stop a rural subdivision that it would have to take some trees down to, to build it.
These are the two criteria that come before plant commission when, when there's development outside the rural, outside the urban service area.
Okay. The, you know, if someone owns, you know, property in the six, six square mile of Pittsburgh and they decide to log it, there's nothing we can do to stop them that's outside the urban service territory. There was one other point here. Bear with me here. So the, the canopy, you know, we were talking about having this survey and all this. You mentioned, you know, they're able to do the survey, can't we? The 30% that's easily determined with an aerial, aerial view of the city, I would think. You know, that we, do we need to do, you know, do a survey of every tree in every yard? And, and, you know, does the city really have to know, have any right to know what tree you have in here, what type of tree you have in your yard? You know, I would think that'd be something voluntary. So I'm, I'm all for trees, you know, like I say, I have a great appreciation. I think you missed a few on your, on your list on there that I'd like to give to you. But I, I still feel that the private property, you know, I do not want to infringe on private property ownership rights. And I know you've, you've worked hard to, to avoid that, but that's the point I want to, I want to make, you know, still, still private property and like I say, the Magna Carta is still an important document to me.
Can I comment about that?
Yes, you may.
A little bit? Okay. And I think that was a big part of our first conversation with our city attorney. And when I called Mequon and, well, first I did some research and I found out how comprehensive their program was. And that was one of my first questions. Have you ever been, have you ever been sued? And they said, no. He said, no. This was a city forester I talked to. And he said, what's happened is that when develop, we work with developers all the time, of course, even though their city is a little bit different stage, they still work with developers a lot. And they said, this is our culture and we just, they know when they come to us that this is what to expect. So they work together for the same goals. But that's a really, that was one of the first hurdles that we dealt with when we came to the city with the proposal. So, and so then we did, and again, that's why this ordinance proposal isn't quite as comprehensive as it was. So we backed up a little bit. So we're looking at getting the conversation on the table, working together with developers for something that's in everybody's benefit, not doing something to them necessarily, but working together. And we also were concerned about the cost and so we did some research on that and it seemed to be pretty reasonable. I think our estimates were more about $1,000. And I'm sure it, it depends on how the size of the property, but, so those are all really great questions and really good feedback.
Yeah, don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm not against what you're trying to accomplish.
Right.
What, what I foresee happening is someone wants to do a development or that the people, you know, say other neighbors or someone around, you know, that, that this will become a means to stop someone from doing what they want on, on property owned, you know, that, that this will, you know, I don't, I don't see us as a city, you know, I won't be in council forever, but, you know, being unreasonable, but, you know, someone that lives, you know, they might be quarter mile away, well, they don't want that development there and they're using this to, to, you know, drag us into court and, you know, and say, no, you can't do that. You're violating your own ordinance by allowing that. And that's, you know, I'm playing devil's advocate here, but I see how these things, how these things happen, you know.
I think that's a, a very real concern that we discussed quite a bit with the city's attorney. And that's, that's part of why we're putting this in with the preliminary plat where if you, if you read it, there's really not a whole lot of, there's, there's no hard stop language. So any barrier to development that, say, neighbors that are, have an axe to grind might, might bring up is, will remain with the plant commission. So whatever, whatever discretion they currently have for those axes to be ground, they, they will retain. And the Tree Advisory Committee nor the city forester certainly will not be a, a big wedge in that system or a roadblock, if you will. It's, it's really going to still stay with the, the plant commission.
Thank you. Appreciate your tolerance with the line of questioning.
Mayor Richardson, you have your hand raised. You have the floor.
Sure. Thank you. I, we talked about this on plant commission and, you know, I think given a plant commission, everyone is really, you know, excited to hear about ways that we can improve or save trees that we have that are a little bit older and, and very valuable. One of the ways that we talked about doing it is actually looking at this from a different perspective, because this is a little bit more of a stick. And what about using more of a carrot methodology where you would actually incentivize developers to save trees by enabling them to reduce fees on parkland or something like that if they save trees that are desirable like this? And we have the list and, you know, that's kind of the same thing. Because it really felt like if you're incentivizing them and they can see a bottom line impact to save a tree, that's really valuable because I really feel like that's also something that can happen to any undeveloped plot in the city. You know, right now you have it just from the preliminary plat, except that there's a lot of land that's already been platted out. For example, your, you know, your example on Key Farms Park, that actually wouldn't fit under what we have right here. But if you did it the other way, where if you're doing the development and you do save these trees that you can reduce, you know, land fee and love or something like that, and you'd probably want a max, you can't have $500,000 in fees that can get waived or anything like that. I don't know what the right amount is, but that's something that actually could apply to that lot on the Key Farms Park that just got developed where even they, if they said, yo, we can save $5,000, I don't know what it is, by preserving this tree on the border, gee, that makes a lot of sense. Well, let's say $5,000. And so I don't know if you talked about this on the Tree Advisory Committee at all, but that's something we talked about plant commission that really makes a lot of sense to me because you're incentivizing the developers to care and to give them a way to improve their bottom line.
I wondered if Scott is still here? If Scott, you might want to answer that or respond to that? We did talk, yeah, because we did have this discussion.
A little bit about that.
Yep, I'm, I'm, I'm here.
Okay.
You know, certainly we've, you know, in the, in the, in Swan Creek Development, I believe it was, we actually had the situation occur where there was a large walnut tree. And the developer, what we did is we took the walnut tree and the area adjacent to it as part of the parkland dedication. So that certainly, certainly is a doable thing. And certainly, you know, as, as we continue to, to develop, if there's a woodlot on a, a parcel, if you would, the, the idea of preserving that parcel for the use as a park and then as the mayor mentioned, using that as a, a potential alternative for parkland dedication fee requirements, along with, there, there certainly is objective calculations to diameter, breast height and certain trees. And so there, there actually is a comprehensive and objective value to said trees. So in theory, it, it could also be a, a park improvement fee credit towards a, you know, a 100-year-old oak or whatever it might be. So, yeah, that's, I, I, I think that, that's, that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think that's an awesome idea too. And we did talk about that. And I think there's some legalities we just need to work out because we were told we can't.
Not really that we can. It's largely that a lot of these incentives could already happen.
Right.
It's more of a culture of working with the developers and the city that adding ordinances to or legal requirements was not really within the realm of either what we should do or what we could do.
Right.
But we are very encouraged by, by the suggestion of it. I think that, that would be excellent. But a, a good starting point in our eyes is the survey that tells us what's actually there. That these conversations get a lot easier if the, the city staff can see that there's these trees on the land that might be worth preserving. Whereas if, if it's just the, the plat submission process survey doesn't include trees most of the time right now. So there's no way to look at the plan and say, here are the trees that we think are worthwhile. So we are more than, more than happy for that change to hopefully take place with the more carrot approach rather than just the stick, as Mayor Richardson put it.
Any additional questions, discussion? I don't see any other hands raised. Is there anything further from the, the presenters?
I would just like to thank you all for your very earnest comments, your questions, your attention tonight. I think the Tree Advisory Committee and the rest of Pittsburgh appreciate it and hopefully everybody is almost as enthused as we are.
Yeah, and thank you for rescheduling us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
I know this isn't easy, you know, a lot of people like me sticking their nose in. I know it's not, not easy to come to consensus, but thank you for your fortitude to keep, keep plugging away on it.
Thank you for all your questions and suggestions. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you and I look forward to further discussion from, from all parties involved. If there's nothing further, we will, we will move on to the rest of our agenda, which is announcements. I do not have any announcements. Mayor Richardson, do you have any announcements this evening? Chad, Chad Brecklin, city administrator? Okay, shake of the head, no. All right then. The next committee, I have just the one, the next committee of the whole meeting is scheduled for April 26, 2023.
Oh, we do, there, there was one thing I wanted to be sure to mention and that is that next, next Wednesday, we have the, the Ag Park hearing that'll be here in regard to the Ag Park in Taravessa. So I think as many of you as possible should try to attend. It is at 6:30.
All right. Thank you for the announcement. Very good. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All right. Motion made by Alder, Alder Allen.
Second.
And seconded by Alder Herbst. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:48 PM. Thank you, everyone.